...sixteenth will come to order. Good evening, would ask that all electronic devices be turned off or silenced and if you would please stand to honor God and country. If you would bow your heads. Father God, may we this evening follow what you instruct in Psalm 15. May we speak the truth from sincere hearts, refusing to gossip or harm our neighbors or speak evil of our friends. May we honor you, Lord, with the best part of everything we produce through these proceedings. We pray in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
And now our pledge to the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, forms are available in the back of the room and may be turned in to the city clerk to your right. If Mr. Ron Smith and Mr. Jack Westbury would come forward, both Mr. Smith and Mr. Westbury have served on the Riverwatch Task Force for the last eight, nine years, excuse me. Both gentlemen have served the task force since it was first established in November 2008. Both gentlemen will be receiving certificates this evening that read Certificate of Recognition Presented to Jack Westbury and to Ronald Smith in recognition of his and their outstanding service to the citizens of Temple Terrace for nine years of devoted service on the Temple Terrace Riverwatch Task Force Committee awarded this, the sixteenth day of January 2018. Thank you. And I think Lori would like to capture a picture of him.
Perfect, thank you.
I feel like you guys shouldn't be thanking me for the past nine years. I'd like to thank the City of Temple Terrace for giving me this privilege. Nine years ago Frank Chalora called me, asked me if I'd serve on this new task force he was putting together. Carl LeVar Cooper was our marine officer and Carl's a good friend of mine and he asked me if I would. I never realized I'd be up here nine years later and having had so much enjoyment. I challenge the task force at this point to keep up our good work. Ron Smith and I have worked long and hard on different things and make the river available to kayakers as well as fishermen and sightseers. And most of all, I challenge the task force to make sure we never get water in the house in Temple Terrace on Hillsborough River. We've worked, I've worked very hard. Our, our neighborhood committee, I promise them year after year, whatever I do, I'll do everything I can do to keep water out of your house. And we have the wherewithal with the canal system, we have the bypass system, that we can make it where the water doesn't come in our houses. And I challenge the task force to take up the fight there and make sure this happens. Thank you for giving me the opportunity and I've enjoyed it. I see a lot of you guys I've served with and it's been fun, it really has. Thank you Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Westbury.
I'd pretty much echo what, what Jack had to say and thank Frank Councilman Chalora for creating this task force nine years ago. It's, it's been a pleasure to serve on it. Councilman Boss has been our representative on that task force for several years and now Councilman Ross is. Thank both of you gentlemen for your participation and guidance. You know, when, when we first started this group, we had no seat at the table. Temple Terrace, you know, was a nobody when it came to the Hillsborough River. We now have a seat at the table and I'm proud to say that we did. We're involved with a lot of different agencies and groups and boards around the Hillsborough County area, City of Tampa, and we now are invited to events that we didn't even know existed eight years ago. So, we've got a very strong working relationship with SWIFTMUD now. And as Jack alluded about, you know, keeping our backyards dry, when the river gets high, now working closely with SWIFTMUD, we actually have operational procedures that they've had for a long time, but I'm not so sure recognized that they had, are now available and put to use every time there's high water threats within our community. They have certain procedures on which gates to open and close, divert the water into the bypass canal, which is what it was designed for back in the sixties. So, we've, we've worked hard with SWIFTMUD to make those kind of things automatic. They just happen now. So, again, I'd like to thank everyone. Andy, appreciate all your help and Bob, yours as well and especially Frank, thank you very much for asking me to participate in this and hopefully I'll be able to return one day and do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.[392.02][392.02](applause). The chair recognizes Councilman Chalora.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and you know, I just want to say, and I don't say this, I've never said this, but I love you guys. You, you guys are, are, to me, the founding fathers of the Hillsborough River for Temple Terrace. These guys are so passionate, they come to every meeting and for those of you that live on the river, if you, if you've paid any attention to it, it's been in much better condition the last nine years than it's ever been. There was times you could walk across it. And, and that's very true. For the first time in its history, because of Jack and Ron, SWIFTMUD embarked on a middle river study. There was always a upper river study and a lower river study and SWIFTMUD always referred to the river as we know it as a reservoir. Tampa calls it a reservoir, but we insisted that it be called the Middle River. So these guys have done a lot of work, they're just pretty humble, but they have really made lots of sacrifices and certainly made a, a huge impact on one of the city's greatest assets, the Hillsborough River, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chalora.
John Ernie, 703 Argyle, I, I just want to take a moment as well, these two gentlemen who I've not met before and thank them, the other members of the council, and as I've said to Frank Chalora, over those nine years, thank you, because I witnessed, you know, it's a great goal to keep the water out of the houses. It's also a great goal to keep the water in the river and that has been a major accomplishment. So, thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you. Next, Kim Straub, the Vice President of Projects for the Temple Terrace Arts Council is here to present a check for $4,000 to Leisure Services Director Carl Langfeld for summer art programming. Ms. Straub.
Council Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about our fabulous festival, very quickly. We had clocked in about, clicked in about 7,500 people from 95 zip codes, about 14 states, and we feel like we owe everyone who was involved in this and who came out to the festival and in particular to the city, who had signage everywhere. You absolutely could not drive through Temple Terrace without knowing there was a festival and many people came as a result of that. And I thank the fest, I thank the Arts Council for having the good sense two years ago to decide to move the festival to Woodmont Park. We had hoped to move it to River Hills, but that was not going to happen because of the tree roots that prevent the use of the strollers and of wheelchairs and also kids who are on their cell phones and trip over them. We could not go back there, but we chose the, one of the finest gems in Temple Terrace, Woodmont Park, and we're very pleased with that and we have continued to grow the number of people who come there. I would like to thank the city very briefly, several people did some outstanding things for us. Greg Polly, who in spite of the hurricane was able to coordinate with a supplier in South Florida and deliver information to every household in Temple Terrace. Thank you. And Lori Hayes, who was absolutely amazing, got an ad in the playbook for us and then came out and took pictures and posted them on social media. I also am indebted to our mayor, who came out for a wonderful Veterans Day celebration and everyone was curious to see our new mayor at a big event. Thank you for.
I thought you were going to thank me for how much money I spent.
Well, that too then.
Thank you.
And especially, I would like to thank Parks and Rec Department, Carl, Cory, Phil and others for the signage, of course, and also for the wonderful connection that was made with the Hillsborough City Schools. So information was given to all of these students about the event and for the, of course, the wonderful Veterans Day celebration. And to Teresa also at the library, who after the event put up our public art exhibit from 44 artists or would-be artists ranging six decades. So we're delighted about that too. So, all that said, my assistant.
Who is our board, is a board member?
And I would like to present this lovely check for $4,000 to be used in sport of arts in the community. As the council, it is our mission to bring arts and culture to the community and beyond and we know we can count on you to spend this wisely, to encourage interest and love for the arts. Thank you so much.[705.02][705.02](applause).
Thank you all very much and I know there was, there was a lot of city staff involved and I'm glad you're there Phil, because Carl and Phil, I know on that day alone, you had three different events going on and each one was flawless and seamless and it was just an absolute delightful weekend for Temple Terrace residents and our, and our guests that came to the city. Phil.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council, my name is Phil Jeter with the Parks and Recreation Department Supervisor over there. I just wanted to say thank you to the Arts Council for their donation of $4,000 as well as their continued support of us over the years. This money will be put to good use to enhance and enrich our programs that we offer to the citizens of Temple Terrace. So, thank you again.
Thank you.[772.12][772.12](applause). Council, if the minutes of the January 4th, 2018 meeting are acceptable, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, very good. Minutes are passed. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda, I don't have any slips. Very good. We will now move on to our consent agenda. City Manager, Mr. Stevenson, will explain the items listed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. First item on the consent agenda is item 5A. It is a resolution to qualify an entity identified by the Tampa EDC, Tampa Hillsborough EDC, on a project known as Uptown 17-118 as a qualified industry business and commit funding totaling $40,000 to be distributed over an eight-year period. On November 14th, the EDC had contacted the city requiring, regarding a financial management services company firm that is located currently in Temple Terrace that is looking to expand within the municipal limits by adding about 100 new personnel, which means a significant investment for them. The business appears to qualify for a, for a QTI incentive under the program that's funded by the state of Florida under, with the Department of Economic Opportunity. Under the QTI program, the state pays 80% of the quali, qualified incentive while the local governments are asked to pay 20%. That 20% in our case is split with Hillsborough County, a 50-50 share. The city, city share, city's share of the proposed incentive is 10%, which would equate to $40,000 again, spread over an eight-year period as jobs are created according to the schedule that's attached to the project profile. This is fairly typical, we do this all the time. It is a commitment of $40,000 only if the state actually qualifies them. The two participating governments are required to pass adopting and approving resolutions. Hillsborough County has done theirs. This is an order, this is our portion of that process. From here, the two resolutions go to the state and the state runs through finishing up the program and qualifying the, the company. That's, that's not atypical of what we've done in the past. These are certainly incentives to companies, not only that are here, but to new companies coming into town. EDC does a wonderful job for us trying to get these target industries into our city limits and we certainly appreciate their efforts. Item, next item, staff would recommend approving that resolution by the way. Item 5B is a resolution approving purchase of five vehicles, 2018 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles for our police department. This is in tune with the vehicle replacement program that the city has incorporated into the community investment tax fund budget. Five vehicles are being purchased from Prestige Ford of Mount Dora under the Sheriff, Florida Sheriff's Association Contract 17VEL25.0. Vehicles be purchased at a cost of $27,029 each for a total payment of $135,000, $135,145. The purchase will be made from account 160-1421-521.64-11. The prices have been verified in the contract award reference herein. The remaining funds in this, in this account will be used to outfit the, the five vehicles with the emergency lights and vehicle graphics and other necessary equipment to, to outfit the vehicles. Also in this resolution would be the purchase of a, of four watch guard, in-car and body worn camera systems that are cost of $29,780 and a required software upgrade at a cost of $6,850, made from watch guard, which is a sole source vendor from Allen, Texas, who services our current system. The payment of this $36,780 will be made from account number 160-1421-521.64-99. These funds are all budgeted funds. The, I, I don't know that I've got anything else to add other than that we need a resolution approving those, those purchases. Staff would recommend approving those purchases.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there members of the public who would like to address council on either of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, if the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve items on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent. Move on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I will call the vote, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you, motion carries. Next, the 2018 Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club Business Plan, Consultant Greg Kristovich will present.
We talked about this earlier, I wasn't sure whether we were going to go around again or not, so.
The abbreviated version.
The shortened version. Are we going to tee up the PowerPoint show again? We can do that, I'll, I'll cover up, I'll just do a 10,000 footer. I did want to make mention though, I know there's been several suggestions about perhaps tabling the issue, but the only caution I would have for everyone involved is that this program is on the launch pad and ready to go and every day that goes by, that we don't have some clearance to start calling referral members and all that kind of thing is just a, another tick of the clock that impacts payment back to the city from the club. So, in all seriousness, I would make quick work of the time period that goes by to resolve the unresolved thing so we can get to work. Okay? Enough said. Doing this for a living, I can tell you, we, you got to get going. All right, let me see if I can go back here to the front. So we talked about earlier in the workshop, kind of how we got here and where the club is, so we'll just cover that briefly. If my glasses on again, need a bigger screen. We'll put a slide up with financial and membership history, we'll talk about the near-term priorities for the management and leadership at the club, we'll give you some recovery plan highlights, we'll talk about some of the key business plan components and milestones and we'll talk about the membership campaign. So, basically, over the last three years, the club has had a steady decline in revenue and membership as a result and these are, by the way, industry-wide challenges, the golf industry, the private club industry are, are experiencing declining demand because people aren't playing as much golf as they used to be and the younger folks aren't quite taking up the game as quickly as they did historically and a lot of us even who are in the, you know, supposedly the baby boomer pipeline to play golf either don't have time or we got grandkids or we got a bad shoulder or something keeping us from playing. So, you're not alone. In fact, 200 clubs around the country closed in 2017 just because they were no longer viable. Okay? So the underutilization and the lost loyalty is definitely threatening the club's viability as a going concern. Past few years, those conditions were compounded by some decisions to raise dues, some decisions to assess members to pay light bills and so we ended up with what I call the, sort of the perfect storm of adverse conditions made worse by some of the decision-making and the untimely departure of the previous golf management company. So what we have been telling the membership is now that they have their club back, it's time for everyone, city, community, membership, management, leadership to step up and implement this recovery plan so that we can sort of save this club. The schedule that is up on the screen, I know for you folks that are here, it's a little bit tough to see, we do have some handouts that we can pass out to you after the meeting if you like, but this just shows the club's membership declining from 2013, we had 756 members. At the end of fiscal year 2016, it was down to 550. Today, it's probably 501 or 2. So we've lost a significant number of members, but it's important to note that the club approached nearly 800 members in 2014. This is post-recession era, so we feel somewhat optimistic that we should be able to get back to some level close to that. Over that same four-year span, the club revenues, total revenues declined by about 22% or $600,000 and at the same time, the club was trying to offset that revenue decline by reducing operating expenses by as much as 12% during that period. But unfortunately, in the last year that we have accurate financials, the club finally ended up in a position of below, slightly below break-even cash flow, which has created the strain financially. Our near-term priorities, some of which have already sort of started to happen with new management on the ground, re-establishing the vision for the club with board leadership and staff, restoring credibility, that is, the credibility and management with, and trust with membership, staff and the City of Temple Terrace. A renewed commitment every day to the member and guest experience, operational consistency and exceeding expectations, a more hands-on approach and greater sense of urgency and attention to detail in every little thing that we do at the club. A full operational assessment, which was what we were charged to do, to let everybody know kind of what our deficiencies were and come up with a balanced budget and a solid business and capital improvement plan for the future. I skipped one bullet earlier, but one of the things that we recognize as being a priority is operating the club under a strict fiduciary responsibility with full support from the membership. What that means is that we have to operate this club like a business, so we can't keep making decisions like we have in the past, whether it means closing the whole golf course for a small group when we could sell additional tee times and make cart fees, having a dinner party for 12 people, we, we certainly wouldn't do that and knowing what the costs are involved in that. So, we've already asked and tasked our membership with the idea of sort of a culture change back to, there's a reason why we got into this situation and there's only one way out and that's to be responsible. We've also recognized that there's been some challenges with the point-of-sale software as it relates to getting numbers out on time and complete and thorough, meaning financial statements and we think we've come up with a solution that's going to make sure that we can present timely and complete financials going forward. Finally, the last bullet is getting to know everyone, that's management's task. I've, I've mentioned Jim Music several times in our membership meeting last Thursday, I told everybody if you have an issue or a challenge or a suggestion, Jim's the guy to go to, not the middle of the grill room during lunchtime, not out on the tee somewhere where everybody can hear us. We've seen quite a bit of that going on. If you have an issue or a challenge or a suggestion, you go straight to the top, right? That's the way every organization should work. He's accessible, visible and always there, so you can't use the excuse that I couldn't find Jim or he wouldn't return my call. And that trickles down as well, so everybody on the team out there knows that if there's something going on, the man gets a phone call. Up our game is my term that just basically says we, we can't go, I'll use a football analogy, we can't afford to lose 10 games again, we've got to make the playoffs this year. So, we need to up our game in all areas to make sure that we can do that. And finally, actions speak louder than words, which is my favorite saying because if it's, we got to walk the talk. If it's not happening, then it's not going to work. Recovery plan highlights, recruit and retain a strong management team and staff. We're halfway there on management, we have two open positions that we're currently recruiting for. We need to obviously make sure that we continue to give the City of Temple Terrace a comfort level that club operations is on the right track. We need to attain a high level of operational readiness, which just means that we're ready to go every day, the windows, the, the windows are clean, the music's playing, the flowers are fresh, the flag's flying, the parking lot's picked up, everything is ready to go when, when the curtain opens. Everything should be in a good state of repair, the golf course and the facilities and our service and programming consistency should be what you would expect from a private club. Next, launch the membership referral campaign and restore the membership welcome committee. I've already asked for a few volunteers and I have a feeling we'll get a few more to help us acclimate all these new members that are going to either come back to the club or join the club. This is whether they need a golf game on a Saturday morning or they need some ladies to play cards with or some friends to hang out with at the pool. This is where we find out just what everybody really wants out of their club and then we hook them up with the people that have common interests. That's what makes a club, a club. I'll talk more about the membership referral campaign here in a few moments. Continue and finalize the process of obtaining capital contribution commitments and commence our Phase One Capital Improvement Program, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. We've heard everything from individual contributors, which we've gotten a group together, to crowdfunding, to simply asking for donations. I told the story last Thursday about a club in Palm Springs that was looking for a $2 million capital raise to do a golf course renovation and they actually voted to assess themselves, but the vote only passed by six or seven percentage points, so the club elected not to assess. They just felt like it wasn't a comfortable environment to do that, they were going to possibly experience a lot of member resignations. So, they went for a voluntary campaign and guess what, they raised all $2 million voluntarily. So there are a lot of different things that we're working on, given that we can clear this hurdle to continue to raise capital so that we can definitely make the improvements that we need to, to make this facility attractive again, so people will want to join and host their functions and tournaments there. We also need to commence a parallel aggressive marketing and public relations campaign. We submitted sort of a sample marketing plan to the committee late last week, but that's just all about not only generating memberships, but banquet business, we feel like is a tremendous opportunity, if we can just answer the phone when they call, booking some additional golf tournaments. We had a great junior outing yesterday with the Florida State Golf Association, 74 young people with their parents enjoying Temple Terrace, everybody had a great time. We need more of that to create this momentum. And then finally, just to create a positive public relations story, I think the Tampa Tribune guy left, but, so he's not going to have much to say tomorrow, but maybe we can give him a call when there's some good news to share with him. And then finally, we need to continue to provide frequent, timely and thorough progress reports and communications to the. reports and communications to the membership and the city. There's been this sort of question about transparency or being forthcoming. That's kind of a myth, I can tell you, from being behind the curtain. Nobody's held anything back. It's just been a competence issue. We've got all the numbers and all the reports and everything that anybody could want in terms of booking pace and progress reports in all areas. We just need to deliver the package, you know? Okay, so here's the milestones, the components. We need to resume rent payments and pay the past due amounts, settle up. When we finally nail that down to the City of Temple Terrace immediately, we're in default. Obviously, the club's in default, so we need to clear that. And the budget and business plan that we put together, those schedules indicate a payment schedule that should be able to get back on track here right away. We need to generate 207, I think now it's 206, members between now and September 30 to get us back to a total of 700. Notice, we're not getting all the way back to 800. We're going to say, let's get back to 700. We'll crawl before we can walk. 300 of those will be full golf. We've got a lot of work to do there. And at that point in time, we'll eliminate this online discount. Well, we no longer have discounted tee times online, but we'll make every effort to not accept any outside, non-member-accompanied guest play once we get to 300 members. Once you get to that level, that tee sheet's pretty full with member play. Finally, we want to have a goal of reaching 750 total members by September 2021. So we've incrementally said, let's add 25 more golf members in 2020, and then again in 2021, to give us a total that maybe we can cap out at, depending on how things are going at that point in time. Wouldn't it be nice to have a waiting list again? Some of us remember that. Raise $650,000 in additional capital for our 2019 capital improvements. And again, there's a schedule here in the presentation, and we have some handouts if you'd like to see those after the meeting. Another segment, as we've talked about, is to grow our food and beverage banquet business to a half a million dollars a year by 2021. We feel like there's a ton of potential to be able to do that. The club's done as much or more of that in banquet revenue historically. We have a nice venue, it's convenient, it's priced right, it needs a little bit of a facelift. But even today, Jim had a couple of calls for some weddings, and we have meetings and appointments scheduled to talk to them about that. And we have a new banquet package that we've produced that we can now distribute, so everybody knows kind of what they're getting for what they're paying. Increase our maintenance budget on the golf course from 700, slightly under 700,000 currently to 825 by 2019. We talked earlier about practices that have not been done in the last year and a half in fertility, pest control, aerification. We need some extra labor. Details just aren't getting attended to. We got tried quite a bit of tree work. If you looked in the budget breakdown for the maintenance department, you'd see a lot of those line item expenses that will help us take the golf course from what most people perceive as like a six or a seven on a scale of 1 to 10 to, as I said in the workshop, like an 11 or a 12. We really think that if this golf course is in great shape, we're not going to have any problem selling golf memberships. It'll be the best deal in town, it'll be the best golf course in the area. And then finally, we definitely need to address at some point in time, some bondholder payments that are, were the one-time payments in to the club that are refundable upon resignation. We have some of those out there that we need to figure out a solution for. Some of them burn off, like somebody's last club bill. I think there's been a few occasions where people have done that, or they get a credit for a period of time. But we do have people, a few people waiting for refunds. They're nominal, they're 500 or $1,000, but we don't have the cash to pay those right now. The next few schedules are our financial schedules that basically show the budget for this coming year, and then a three-year pro forma. Again, they're very difficult to read, but they basically show that the club can, if we achieve our objectives, can achieve positive cash flow this coming fiscal year and maintain its required payments to the city. The following schedules are the capital improvements proposed for the first quarter of this calendar year, the fiscal year from April 1, 2018, to March 31, 2019, and then a three-year capital plan. That's obviously extensive, but there are two components to the capital. One is infrastructure and equipment, the other is cosmetics and, you know, what we call upgrading of the facilities. They're everything from redoing parking lots, to adding signage, to renovating interiors, to buying new maintenance equipment, to repairing irrigation, and on and on. Bunkers are in there as well. So if you haven't had a chance to see the capital, or don't have a copy of the book that was posted up on the agenda today, we'd be happy to see you over at the club when we can talk about it further. The membership campaign is all about keeping it simple. We've got three categories that we know we can sell because we've sold them before. We have a $69 a month social membership, we've got $199 a month full golf membership, and we have a corporate golf membership that's a four-designee package that's $179 per month. All the same privileges. Again, we sold this program a couple of times in the past, and they sold like hotcakes. Then we made the decision to assess those people and raise their dues, and they decided they no longer wanted to stick around. We're going to find out very quickly if this price point works. We had a couple of emails today from some folks that said, why don't we do a little more diligence? We're the best deal in town. The next closest club in price is Buckhorn Springs. They're 310 a month for a golf membership. If we stay in our neighborhood here, we're up over $400 for a golf membership, and we're $160 a month for a social. So the club is convenient. When we fix it up, it's going to look even better than it is. When we take care of our service expectations, we're going to show people a great time. And we think this is a product we can sell. If we, if we make 50 calls and get 10 hits, I'll be pretty happy. That's a 20% close rate. If we get two hits, we're going to be talking some more about what kind of product we're offering. But we're going to find out fairly quickly. How are we going to find them? There are buckets of revenue in my world that I think we can go after here, notwithstanding the banquet discussion that we had earlier and the golf event discussion we had earlier. That's all going to be part of our marketing plan. We need to leverage the city resources. We've already established a great relationship with the chamber and are going to host and be involved in all of the events that we can with them. They, obviously, they have a huge list of folks we can call on, and we have a huge business and organizational community right here around us. We've just never done any outreach. So we need to get, get our walking shoes on and make sure we're doing a ton of cold calling. We're also going to lean on our current membership to send us referrals. We have 500, roughly 500 members. If we could get one member from every two that we have, game on. We're also going to contact the 1,000-plus members who have left the club in the last three years and offer them sort of an amnesty program. Under the current rules, you can't just drop out and sign back up again, but we're going to forgive all that and tell everybody that they're welcome to come back. And we've already had a handful of people rejoin. So it's going to be a very aggressive, it's a numbers game. In sales, if you can close 3%, 4%, or 5% of your prospects, you're doing pretty well. Well, that would mean that we would need several thousand referrals, but we can get, we can get them, you know? We can get those, we can get those referrals. We're also going to have a promotion, we're going to have a contest. So everybody who refers a member who joins, and the person who joins, Jim came up with sort of the prize package today. We're doing an all-expense-paid trip to Pinehurst, which is sort of the iconic historical golf mecca of this country. So Jim has some relationships there. So whoever brings us the most referrals will have an opportunity to win that prize. And we've got a handful of others, set of clubs, gift cards, cases of wine, all that. If we can create a little bit of a competition amongst our membership, then we hope that that'll help generate some fun and some energy. Why a membership? This is just sort of a value sheet, but, you know, this is what we're telling people. Why would I want to join Temple Terrace? Well, gosh, it's such a great club. It's right here in the center of the community. The quality of club life there, the pride in the club, and the historical value of the club, you know, it's a special, special place. Jim told me last week, he said, there aren't many things around that are 100 years old anymore. Most of them get torn down and something else gets built on them. So we need to, we need to really play that up. Once that college auditorium gets done, Jim wants to have a big party over there to get everybody back in the old, you know, hotel building. So we really need to play that up. In fact, the membership card that he put together now has that picture on the front of the card in black and white, and it's calligraphy'd with the member name on the back. Just again, it's just another little theming thing that we can cap, sort of capture the historic value of the club. Golf course has always been a favorite. I mean, I run into people all over the country, and I say Temple Terrace, and then somebody says, gosh, my grandfather was a member there, I grew up playing golf there. We have a lot of people who really love playing the golf course. If we can take it up a couple of notches, we really think that's going to go a long way. Again, the dining, banquet, social center, I mean, if you've been to a karaoke night, or a Halloween party, or trivia, you know, Jim locked up at 1 o'clock the other night for trivia night. It really is, you know, a fun place to be, and people love going there to celebrate just daily life. Lot of potential to increase the number of events that we have. We have a great social committee, and they're very creative and come up with some great ideas. The club's affordable, it's convenient. We heard in our focus groups that it's not stuffy, it's not one of those clubs where you feel like you got to dress like this. There is a component that we feel like we can capture with business luncheon business and things like that, but you obviously don't have to, it's not a club you say you belong to. It's a club that you use and enjoy. We don't have any initiation fees. Many of the clubs in the area are charging initiation fees, $3,000 at Tampa Palms right now. We can sell that. At some point in time, we'd like to reinstate an initiation fee. May not be much to start out with, but that's, you know, kind of found money for capital. And there may come a time where we might be able to get 500 or $1,000 bucks from a prospective member who wants to join the club. We don't have a food and beverage minimum, that's another plus. Most clubs do. We feel like if our restaurant's great, you're going to want to come there, and we shouldn't expect you to have to spend, you know, $50 or $100 a quarter to come and eat there. And we've sort of made a commitment, and if we decide not to do this, I probably won't be standing here, but we don't want to assess our membership anymore. That's been the kiss of death on a couple of occasions, and we, we just simply can't afford to do that. It'll ruin our credibility at this point if we, if we have to do that. Again, the voluntary contribution or the crowdfunding might be a better option. Great staff there. I've experienced them firsthand, even before anybody knew who I was. They're very friendly. They treat the members with the proper respect and sincerity. We think we've got a great team to build on. And then finally, we've got a really dedicated group of individuals on all fronts and organizations committed to the future success of the club, between the council and staff, board of directors, management, chamber. There are so many people out there rooting for Temple Terrace right now to win this thing and get through it. It's been an amazing outpouring, and we've had, you know, four or five guys write checks for $93,000 to try and get us caught up. So I've seen a lot of situations like this. I'll just tell you, hundreds of them, literally. I've been in this business for 30 years, and most of the places I go and look at, I tell them they're doomed, you know? And after about a week here, I wasn't sure about this one, frankly, because it, there was so much going on. But as you read my report, I think most of this is self-inflicted. I don't think the headwinds are such that you're going to lose this game. And I've been all over the country. In fact, I'm working with an owner now that unfortunately, they don't have a recovery plan that's ever going to work for them. They're just not in the right area, they don't have the right history, they don't have the right, you know, emotion and passion and community pride to make it work. I really think you got a chance. If you had hired me, if the city had hired me versus the club, even though the city sort of told the club to talk to me, my conclusions would have been the same. The pro formas would have looked the same. I thought about this all week. I thought, you know, how can I, how can I make it clear? But the, I'm, I'm the guy who takes a totally objective view of things and tells the story. If it wasn't going to work, I'd tell you, okay? And the reason I think that the club has asked us to stay on as sort of the navigator, which is kind of what I've called us, we're holding a compass, is that if anything's, looks like it's coming off track, or Jim needs some additional support, we'll, we'll be there to make sure everybody knows exactly what's going on, and hopefully be able to tell the good news going forward. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kristovich.
You're welcome. Questions?
At this point, I'd ask if there are any members of the public who would like to address council on this agenda item. Seeing none, I'll turn to council. Councilman Pogorlik.
Two things, and correct me if I'm speaking out of turn. I just want to mention one thing that you, I think you told me, if I think I remember correctly, that I wasn't aware of. If you're a realtor in town, you can go there tomorrow with a potential homeowner and have lunch, and if that person buys a house, they get a three-month social member for nothing, right? That, that, I didn't know that. I see some people out there saying, oh, wow, okay, I didn't know that either. So I just wanted to mention that. And the second thing is, during the beginning of your presentation, is you had alluded to perhaps tonight's events might slow down the plan a little bit. Please don't. Please don't slow down. We'll get this worked out. Okay? Thank you.
I just would ask if you or somebody else would just recap what took place at the workshop, so the folks that are sitting at home know what's going on, because we had a lot more dialogue and discussion, the offer that was made, you know, just sum it up. We don't want to sit here for another two hours, but maybe if you'd like to do that, that might give everybody a better...
I'll be happy to, and I'll also lean on Councilman Pogorlik, who has been our intermediary with the, with the golf course. But as of this evening, the golf course board of directors and Mr. Kristovich were prepared to offer the city $93,750, with the understanding that that was the monies that were due. As finances were looked into over the last, I made the note of 48 hours, it came to light that there is actually two additional quarters that were in the rears totaling $31,250. So there was a recommendation that perhaps those dollars could be split over two payments or over a period of time. So the discussion, there were four options that were put forward at our workshop. One was we can accept the $93,750 as full and final payment. We could accept the $93,750 and then look at a payment of the remaining $31,250 over either a six-month time period or a year time period. The third was the nuclear option, that we thank everyone for their earnest time and effort and ask for the keys. The fourth option that was presented was perhaps put the additional dollars, get the $93,750 right now, and the $31,250 that everyone was made aware of over the last 48 hours to perhaps add that to the end of the note. Am I capturing that correctly?
It is, but I feel obligated to, once again, make a point of clarification in that part of this $93,000 issue is a, is a timing issue. The club had thought that they were not two additional quarters behind, and that the $93,000 would get them paid up through the first quarter of 2018. The suggestions that I made assumes that the $93,000 would be paid against all the arrears in 2017, and that the, the 2018 would go, would be, would be due the end of March, along with the additional arrears, which I suggest to be split up over two quarters. So just so we understand, it's not just, it's not just the $93,000 in their mind got them up through the first quarter of 2018. All the other suggestions that followed were to apply that $93,000 to the 2017 arrears, and any additional arrears would be split up over two quarters or a year or whatever. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, where the, that the math is going here.
Thank you. With that update, I would entertain a motion.
I'd just like to say one other thing. The club had asked, and we discussed it also at the workshop, about tabling this item so that they could go back to people who are making this financial commitment and fully explain it to them, because there's just no way to do it, given the short timeframe.
I would ask, Councilman Boss, is that your, is that your motion?
I would make a motion to table this to the January, February 6th meeting.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, is there any new business to come before the council? Seeing none, we'll go to Mr. Stevenson for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick item, that's all I've got this evening, is to remind council and the, and the community that we have a town hall meeting this coming Thursday, 7 o'clock. and the community that we have a town hall meeting this coming Thursday, 7 o'clock. It is at Omar Lightfoot Center. We hope that everybody out there comes and attends the meeting and kind of joins in in the conversation, so. I don't have anything else. Do you share with council?
Is there any further business to come before the council?
Just want to, the next workshop we have is the next council meeting, correct? But it has a, it has a topic already.
Yes.
I'm sorry, say that one, one more time.
At the next council meeting in February, the first meeting in February...
Yes, ma'am.
The topic is our, with our city finance direct, management team?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
We have our financial advisors coming in at 4:30, I think. It's a workshop to lay out the refinancing of the $24 million that we have with the PNC Bank. They have provided us with a, with a preliminary PowerPoint with some information, and we'll be getting that to council here as early as we can.
I would like to know on, just going back momentarily on the country club. I understand that this committee, this review committee that we appointed, you all have been the ones talking to the country club. How do you want us to give you our, our thoughts and our suggestions? Send it to you, Mr. Stevenson, or, because, I mean...
It would be, yeah, it'd be better if you farm it through me, because I can then relay it to everybody. You obviously can't go through Mr. Pogorilak.
No.
So, in order to circumvent that sunshine issue, if you go through me, we'll make sure it gets disseminated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the body? Meeting is adjourned.